Open it for three minutes, anyone who cares to speak to this commission on any item. See you in none, we'll move to approval of the agenda. And on a note on the agenda, we're going to move item 10, PCN 17-0035, ahead of the public hearings before item eight.
Mr. Chair.
Please.
I move to approve the agenda with moving number 10 into the public hearing items.
We have motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carries. And we'll move on to the approval of the minutes, and first approval of the minutes, we're going to the study session for October 31st.
Mr. Chair, I move to approve the study session minutes of October 31st.
Thank you, we have a second.
Second.
A motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Now for the minutes of November 2nd, we have some modification changes, Mr. Carey, would you like to comment on those, please?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman, for the commission's consideration, I have some proposed changes to the 11-12, 11-2 commission meeting minutes, on page two, that's under item eight, PCN 1748. In the fifth paragraph, I'd like to have the minutes changed to better reflect my comments with respect to the BRT route on Crater Way. And then, the second suggested change I'd like to bring forth to the commission is, on page three, for the, in the fifth paragraph, just wanted to clarify some of the comments that I had made prior to the vote with respect to that same item. Be happy to answer any questions, if there are any, and appreciate the consideration of the commission.
Can we have a motion reflecting those changes on the minutes, please?
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of November 2nd with the proposed changes by Commissioner Carey. Second.
A motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries, thank you. We'll move on to announcement of any committee report, please.
Chairman Peterson, members of the Planning Commission, Armando Nellis, Assistant Community Services Director, with regard to announcements, the one announcement I have for you is that we are intending at this point to have a meeting on December 21st. We have a pending case that is a, involves a comprehensive plan land use amendment, and it's time sensitive in that, you know, that will have to go on if it's approved by the Planning Commission to our regional planning for a conformance review. The Regional Planning Commission next meets on January 10th, and so if we don't, if we were to put it off, then potentially this item gets pushed out for conformance review until, you know, potentially March. So, for that reason, we are going to be asking you to, you know, meet as is on the schedule on December 21st.
Thank you. Any informational items?
I know, I don't have any other, I don't have any informational items.
Then we'll go ahead and move on to the general business item of item 10, PCN 17-0035.
Chairman Peterson, members of the Planning Commission, Armando Nellis, Assistant Community Services Director, and just a note, for those that maybe are in the audience, the reason we are requesting, or requested the Planning Commission here, item 10, ahead of the public hearing items, is that it is intended frankly to have a direct bearing on your consideration of item, agenda item eight, it's the same case, if you will. And so what this is, is a development agreement. On October 19th, in terms of acronym, on October 19th, the Planning Commission conducted a public hearing on the applicant's request to amend the comprehensive plan land use designation and rezone the 67 acre property located at the southwest corner of Highland Ranch Park, Highland Ranch Parkway and the Pyramid Highway. May we have the, so here is the site outlined in cyan, I guess is the color, again, it's at this southwest corner of Highland Ranch Parkway and the Pyramid Highway. And, you know, the case involved, again, the comprehensive land use designation and a rezoning request. The Planning Commission, after a considerable amount of discussion, continued its consideration of these items to this, to the meeting this evening regarding concerns about the, whether the proposed comprehensive plan amendment conforms with goal 3.5, which is typically referred to, or generally referred to, as the concurrency requirement in the Truckee Meadows Regional Plan. So the continuation was intended to provide city staff and the applicant's representative, who was here this evening, Mr. Garrett Gordon, an opportunity to follow up on a statement that Mr. Gordon made regarding the willingness to deed restrict or otherwise provide for an opportunity to, for the property to be included in impact fee service area number one. And so ultimately, after discussions between city staff and Mr. Gordon, what is in front of you today is a form of development agreement rather than a deed restriction, it's fairly limited in its scope. And the reason you're being asked to review the development agreement, the proposed development agreement this evening is for two reasons. One, first, the Planning Commission is responsible for reviewing development agreements for consistency with the comprehensive plan as called for in the zoning code Title 20. And then the second reason is that the proposed agreement is intended to serve as the basis for satisfying the concurrency requirement for the associated land use approvals, that is the comprehensive plan and rezoning request. So ultimately, the development agreement must be approved for the Sparks City Council, by the Sparks City Council for it to take effect. Your role is to review it and make a recommendation to the city council. It includes the following provisions, first, that the property owners will not withdraw the petition they filed with the city for inclusion in IFSA number one, prior to when the petition is considered for approval by the Sparks City Council. So in other words, they're agreeing not to withdraw the petition up until, you know, until either it is, you know, rejected by the city council or considered by the city council, provided that occurs prior to December 31st of 2018. Secondly, the development agreement stipulates that no building permits will be issued or approved on the property prior to the consideration of the IFSA number one petition by the city council. And then, there's also a provision in the proposed development agreement that the property owners and the city recognize and agree that the fiscal analysis provided by the property owners with their comprehensive plan and rezoning applications assume that the infrastructure inside the site, the streets, gutters, curbs and sidewalks, will be privately owned. And so, you know, there's the, there was that assumption made that, you know, all that infrastructure would be privately owned and therefore privately maintained, and therefore that had a direct bearing on the fiscal impact analysis being positive. So, nothing in the, in the development agreement requires or obligates the city to accept any dedication of any, of the infrastructure. Developer is not precluded from requesting that they be able to dedicate that infrastructure to the city, but it would require a new fiscal impact analysis be prepared at that point in time, so that it could be considered by the city council. With regard to the proposed development agreement and whether or not it is consistent with the comprehensive plan, in staff's view, it provides a pathway for the subject property to be brought into IFSA number one while preventing development on the site prior to that occurring, at least for the period through December 21st, 2018. That time period should be sufficient for the city to process that petition, and if it, you know, if it is brought into IFSA number one, then there is a basis for making the concurrency finding. So, for these reasons, the development agreement, we believe, your staff believes, supports and is consistent with the comprehensive plan goals and policies, policy MG5, which reads, "When reviewing master plan amendments for sites over five acres, the city will evaluate or cause to be evaluated," and there's a number of things, but most specifically, or most relevant here, are the impacts on existing planned facilities and infrastructure, the impacts on existing and planned public services, and the fiscal implications for public service providers of the proposed land use changes. And then secondly, we believe it is consistent with policy CF1, which reads, "When reviewing new development, the city will not approve an application unless city services can be provided at acceptable service levels." So, again, we view the development agreement as supporting the finding that the city can provide municipal services to the subject property concurrent with development, and therefore are recommending that the Planning Commission find the proposed development agreement associated with PCN 17-0035, consistent with the Sparks Comprehensive Plan, and that you forward a recommendation of approval of the development agreement to the city council. So that concludes my presentation, and I will press any questions you may have.
Any questions from the commission?
Armando, I have a technical question with the proposed agreement. Looking at section three, that's the default and opportunity to cure section. If there's a disagreement between the property owner and the city on any provision of the agreement, what is the process to resolve those issues? Does it go to remediation, does it go to courts, or does it, kind of looks like it provides an opportunity to kind of work it out amongst each other?
I'm actually going to refer that question to legal counsel.
Assistant City Attorney Allison LaFormica, if there were a dispute about the meaning of the contract, that couldn't be resolved by the city attorney's office and Mr. Gordon, then there would be, litigation would be possible. I don't, I don't frankly see much in here that could be misconstrued and that a resolution wouldn't be possible through some discussion and possibly renegotiation of any ambiguous Did that answer your question, Commissioner Carey?
Yes, thank you, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Any further questions, staff? See you in none, I think you know, back to the commission for discussion and possible vote.
Do you need to open it for public comment?
No, no. Any discussion on this matter?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. You know, one of the concerns that I had last month when we brought up this, this item was with the concurrency findings, I think that's a very important policy within our comprehensive plan and the regional plan as well, too. And I believe that this proposed agreement, I agree with staff, that it provides a pathway for us to provide the future services on this property and will help advance goals CF1 and MG5.
Any further discussion? If not, I'll entertain a motion, please.
Mr. Chair, I'm prepared to make a motion. I move to approve the development agreement for case PC 17-0035. I have it, I'm sorry, I must have lost the motion. Sorry. Okay, I move to find the proposed development agreement associated with PCN 17-0035, consistent with the Spark Comprehensive Plan, and to move forward a recommendation of approval of the development agreement to the city council.
Second.
Motion, we have a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, thank you. Now we'll move on to the public hearing item, PCN 17-0035, number eight.
Good evening, Chairman Peterson and Planning Commission, I'm Karen Melby, Development Service Manager. Before you tonight is a consideration of, regarding a site that's 6.74 acres, can I have, okay, located, here's Pyramid Highway, it'd be essentially the southwest corner and be this property outlined in cyan. The first request refers you tonight as a master plan amendment or a comprehensive plan amendment to change the land use from open space and commercial to all commercial. The second request is a rezoning from A40 to commercial, general commercial. This property petition for annexation was approved by the city council on October 24th, 2016. The application was before the Planning Commission on October 19th, 2017. The Planning Commission expressed concerns regarding the proposed comprehensive plan amendment, especially in conformance with goal 3.5, the concurrency requirement of the Truckee Meadows Regional Plan. The previous item that you just reviewed, the development agreement was, was, is a companion item to this process, and the applicant's representative agreed that we continue the, this item until tonight's meeting. The first request, as I stated, is a comprehensive plan amendment. The property is designated, let me pull those maps up, this is the comprehensive plan designation. You can see, there's 14 acres here of commercial on here, and, I'm sorry, 50, I think 53 acres of open space. What they're requesting to do is, is change the comprehensive plan designation to commercial. The second request is, right now, when the property came in for annexation, upon annexation to the city, the zoning is A40, which is agricultural, and they are requesting to make a zoning designation of commercial. The, addressing the comprehensive planning findings, the first finding, which is CP1, is the conformance with the regional plan. The properties are within the city of Sparks, portion of the TMSA, meeting goal 1.1. A slope analysis will be required to define the developable area before any development can occur on these properties complying with goals 2.3 and Sparks Municipal Code 20.04011. The proposed development agreement, which you just previously reviewed, stipulates that the site will be incorporated into IFSA number one, prior to any development on the site, allowing the staff to address the concurrency with the development of the site, complying with goal 3.5. Complying with, or finding CP2, the implementation of the Sparks Comprehensive Plan. Approval of the comprehensive plan amendment and rezoning requests supports goals MG1 and MG2 by adding land of not, which will be non-residential land uses. Policies MG5 requires a fiscal impact analysis, which the applicant has submitted, and also in an updated letter of July 14th, 2017. The fiscal impact analysis assumes that any streets, gutters, curbs, sidewalks will be privately owned. With the eventual inclusion of the subject property into IFSA number one, the development of the site will contribute to the construction of a fire station to serve the area, storm drain, sewer and parks improvements. Provided the development agreement is approved, it is staff's view that the requested comprehensive plan amendment, land use amendment, supports goals, goal MG5, and also policy CF1. The required slope analysis with any development will determine the total area that will be, that could be disturbed, which complies with policies RC22 and RC23. Addressing finding CP3, which is the compatibility with the surrounding land uses, this parcel is located on the west side of Pyramid Highway, to the east over in here, this is all the Kylie Ranch North Plan Development. Within the Kylie Ranch Plan Development, there's 156 acres that have been designated for commercial uses. At this time or to this day, none of these land uses have been developed. To the north and west of are vacant lands, which are steep slopes. The proposed commercial uses on the subject property would be compatible with the land uses in this area, making this corner a node of commercial. Finding CP4, which is public notice, on October 6th, 2017, public notice was published in the Reno Gazette Journal. The neighborhood meeting was conducted by the applicant on October 11th, 2017, three people attended that meeting. Now to address the rezoning findings, the first finding Z1 is consistent with the Sparks Comprehensive Plan. As discussed under the finding CP2, the same goals and policies are relevant also to the rezoning request, and staff believes that the findings could be also made for the rezoning request. Finding Z2, which is consistent with the surrounding land uses, as, again, as discussed under the finding CP3, with the surrounding land uses and zoning, staff believes that the zone request is consistent with the surrounding land uses. And then the last finding is Z3, which is public notice. The Planning Commission and city council function as the public hearing for this item. There were 46 neighborhood notices mailed out within a radius of 750 feet of this property, and also notice was published in the Reno Gazette Journal on October 6th, 2017. That concludes my presentation, I'm available for any questions.
Commissioners have any questions, staff? See you in none, thank you Karen, and the applicant representative here, please.
For the record, Garrett Gordon, on behalf of Bruce Investments, nothing substantive to add, I just wanted to come and say thank you. I know last commission meeting, you gave me the opportunity to go sit down with staff and try to work out some of these details. I verbally committed to no pulling building permits and not to withdraw the IFSA petition. We put that in writing and it will be recorded, so I want to thank Mr. Martini, Mr. Nellis, legal counsel, for working together on the compromise that I think lets this project go forward, lets them work on the IFSA. In the meantime, we can continue doing parcel maps and other development activities while this moves forward, and as I think a commissioner said on the record last time, Sparks remains open for business, and hopefully we have a nice development project here that we all can be proud of. So, thank you very much for the opportunity to put this agreement together.
Thank you, Mr. Gordon. This being a public hearing, I will open it to a public hearing, and anybody who has any comments on this item may so speak, you have up to three minutes. See you in none, I will bring it back to the commission for discussion and a possible motion. As I might remind our commissioners, when we might make a motion on this, there will be two motions to be made on this, please. The first one we're taking now would be the comprehensive plan, please. Any discussion?
Mr. Chair, I'm prepared to make a motion. Move to approve the request to amend the comprehensive plan associated with PCN 17-0035, based on findings CP1 through CP4, and the facts supporting these findings as set forth in the staff report.
A motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Now before we move on, for the other motion of the city council, I must open this for public hearing also, anyone who wish to speak on the rezoning of this item, if now can come up, and again, you have three minutes. See you in none, or bring it back to the commissioners for discussion, a possible motion on that.
Mr. Chairman, I move to forward a recommendation of approval to the city council for the rezoning associated with PCN 17-0035, based on the findings Z1 through Z3, and the facts supporting these findings as set forth in the staff report.
Thank you, I have a motion, second, please.
Second.
And a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries, thank you. And we'll move on to PCN 17-0028.
Good evening, Chairman Peterson and Planning Commissioners, again Karen Melby, Development Service Manager. Before you tonight is a request to amend the Sierra View Townhomes Plan Development Handbook. What they're requesting to do is revise the design and development standards within the handbook. On this property here, which is 30.5 acres, here's Los Altos, down here would be Vista. be Vista. The zoning on the property is new urban district, and there's a Plan Development Handbook that was approved in two thousand and six, I'm sorry, seven. The rezoning was two thousand and six, and in two thousand and seven, there was a final handbook that was approved by the City Council for this development. What the applicant is requesting is to amend the approved Plan Development Handbook. They are proposing forty-five town home lots, and based on the slope analysis on the property, the developable area would be fifteen point oh nine acres, and they are proposing for the forty-five lots to only develop four point three acres. This is the proposed site plan, which is down here, they only have one access off of Los Altos for the development. Above this would be all the open space, twenty-six acres is open space. This handbook, as I stated, it was previously approved and recorded. What they're, what the main thing that they wanted to amend in this handbook are the architectural design of the homes. If this handbook would not be approved by City Council, they could still go ahead and develop this handbook with the old architecture. When they decided to revise the architecture, what it does is it has split units, which changes the grading on the property and reduces the number of retaining walls that are needed for the project. There are two types of houses on this property. As you can see, as noted on this site plan, they have what they call the uphill units, which has the garage on the ground floor, and then the living space above that, two stories. And then on the downhill units, they have a daylight basement. So basically, your garage is at the street level, and then you have a space above and below the garage. It does not change the height of the buildings. It actually ends up being reduced height from what the previous architecture was. As we discussed in the study session, this happens to fall in a process of an interim period here. So what I'm going to do today is address the findings that are for a final handbook. And then also, in the draft code of the zoning code, Title twenty, we have new findings for when you're modifying in a recorded final handbook. So let me walk you through both of those findings next. The five criteria for amended handbook one, the first one is, it does not vary the gross residential density or intensity of the recorded Sierra View Town Home Plan Development Handbook. Because the overall density is one point five units per acre, the proposed amendment, proposed handbook amendment does not have any changes to the density. They're remaining the same unit, what this request is for the change in the architecture and some grading, which then, you know, makes some other changes through the handbook. But the next one is, does not vary the proposed ratio of residential to non-residential. This project is entirely residential, so there is no change in the residential to non-residential ratio. It does not, the next finding is, does not reduce the common open space. The proposed amendment is staying within the envelope that they had proposed previously for the improvement, which is the four point three three acres and forty-five lots. They will still have the twenty-six acres of open space above this property. There is no increase in the floor area proposed for non-residential within the handbook. The non-residential uses are not, there are no non-residential uses proposed either in the final recorded handbook or this amendment. There is no, the next finding is, there's no increase in the total ground area covered by the buildings, nor is there a substantial change in the height. As I stated, the proposed amendment does propose changes in the architecture, but there is no, the actual height of these structures, it will be less than previously approved. There is also no changes in the developable area or the ground covered by the buildings. Based on these five substantial compliance listed in Sparks Municipal Code twenty oh two point oh one two B, and also N R S two seventy-eight A five forty, staff believes that the amended final Plan Development Handbook for the Sierra View Town Homes Plan Development is in substantial compliance with the recorded final handbook as approved by City Council. The next findings that I wanted to go through is the proposed findings in our Sparks Municipal Code with modification for our final approved plan. The first one, finding A, states, consistent with the Comprehensive Plan in the Truckee Meadows Regional Plan. The Truckee Regional Plan goals relevant to this project are Goals one point one and two point three, because the project is within the T M S A area, and the land uses in the handbook are consistent with the Comprehensive Plan land uses. The Sparks Comprehensive Plan goals and policies are consistent with the project R, Goal MG six, Policy CF one, Policy RC twenty-two, and Policies RC twenty-three, because the design of the home is a cluster development reducing the per capita cost of providing infrastructure. The site included, has been included in the city's sewer modeling and will not change the service levels that have been proposed for this area. The site will be served by Fire Station Four and is within the six-minute response time. There's only one access point, as you can see here, on Los Altos. Therefore, the Fire Department has requested that the units have fire sprinklers. The handbook does address the slope analysis, which is consistent with the Policies RC twenty-two and twenty-three. The next finding B states, is the project consistent with the surrounding land uses? The town home sites are surrounded by open space on the north and east. Let me go back to, you can see in looking at this vicinity map, the towns, this property is, to the north is open space, because the units will be down in this area right here. So north of this will be open space, to the east and west is open space. The north and east open spaces within the Desert Hills Plan Development. The western open space is part of Liberty Hills subdivision. To the south across Los Altos are commercial uses. The proposed town homes will not be located adjacent to any single-family homes, so the city staff believes that the proposed town homes project is consistent with the surrounding land uses. Finding C, which is the fiscally positive to the city for a period of at least twenty years, this finding is not applicable, as the proposed modification does not change the permitted uses, residential densities, or non-residential intensity. The street and improvements will be private within the project. Finding D, which is the further mutual interest of the residents and owners of the Plan Development. This Plan Development has never been developed, so there are no existing residents or property owners within the Plan Development. Therefore, the proposed amendment will not impact any of the residents within the Plan Development. Finding E, will not impair the reasonable reliance of residents and owners upon the provisions of this plan. The Plan Development has not been developed, so there are no residentials. However, the plan is the same as was approved previously, so there should be no impact to the neighborhoods either. Finding F, will not result in changes that would adversely affect the public interests. The public interest will not be affected by this amendment, as the proposed changes are in substantial compliance with the previously approved handbook. Finding G states, consistent with the efficient development and preservation of the entire Plan Development. There is no change in the number of lots, and also, it would remain as twenty-six acres of open space. Finding H, does not adversely affect either the enjoyment of land abutting or across the street from the Plan Development or public interest. The Sierra Town Home site is located along an isolated section of Los Altos Parkway, does not adjoin any single-family homes. The existing single-family homes to the north are located at a higher elevation than the town home site units. Their only access to the site will be directly from Los Altos Parkway, and will not have any direct access to any of the other subdivisions within the area. City staff does not anticipate any commercial, any impacts on the commercial uses across the street up Los Altos Parkway to the south. Finding I is not granted solely to confer private benefit to any person. This property is only owned by one property owner, and therefore, the proposed benefits would benefit the project and any future homeowners. The last finding is public notice. The Planning Commission and City Council serve as the public hearing for this item. There was public notice sent out to a hundred and fourteen people within a seven hundred and fifty-foot radius of this property. And within, a public notice was printed in the Reno Gazette Journal on November third, two thousand and seventeen. That concludes my presentation. I'm available for any questions.
Commissioners, have any questions, the staff?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I was curious about, you mentioned in your presentation in the staff report that the building footprint of these town homes would be actually smaller than what was previously?
No, it's the same size.
Oh, it's the same size?
Yeah. The lots are the same. It's just a different, they're doing a split-level design now, which then picks up some of the grading across the property, and therefore reduces the number of rockery walls.
Rockery walls, okay. Thank you.
Before that, the units were flat. So it also will give, along the street, the private street, you won't have such a, the tall units along both sides of the street, so that kind of reduces that tunnel feeling when you drive down this private street.
Thank you.
Any further questions? Karen, I have one.
Sure.
You mentioned Fire Department requests fire sprinklers, and I can definitely see why. Wasn't that in the first handbook anyhow?
Yes, it was.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, that's just not, that's not a change, but I just thought I'd mention it.
Okay, thank you. Any further questions, staff? Thank you, Karen. Is the applicant representative here?
Good evening. For the record, my name is Ken Crater, and I am the applicant on this project.
Mr. Crater, before you begin, I got to inform you, you have fifteen minutes.
Okay, I won't take that long, so, thank you. Can I get the overhead display turned on, please? Oh, gotcha. So Karen did a good job of explaining the project and addressing the findings. I just wanted to highlight a few issues. And we have been working on this project for a long time. The recession, like many projects, brought it to a screeching halt for a while, but we still have been doing some things to perfect it and make it a better project. And one of the first things that we're able to achieve a couple of years ago is, down here along Los Altos Parkway, we actually managed to get an easement from our adjoining property owner. The original handbook actually called for a very tall retaining wall up to fifteen feet in height, which could have been one of those graffiti magnets. And so with that easement allowing us to do slopes and rockery walls and landscaping, now we can beautify that area instead, and step rockery walls up that hillside and landscape the terraces in between and make it much more attractive. So that was one important thing we did. Second is, we got a geotechnical engineer out here on site, because we knew that underneath the soil, some very hard rock. And so we did a very extensive survey of the soils underneath and found out that this area here by the cul-de-sac of the project had some very hard rock. So as part of this application, we've actually removed three units that we had in that cul-de-sac and scattered them throughout the rest of the site, which is good, because that would have been some of the closest homes to some of the adjoining residences, but also helped us reduce the amount of rockery walls and cut on that site. I also think it's important, what Karen mentioned, that this site is about thirty point five acres under the Hillside Development Code. Technically speaking, we can develop about fifteen point one acres, but we're only actually developing four point three three acres out of that entire thirty point five five acre site. Years ago, there was a final map approved up in this area right here, which will ultimately allow for about eight one-acre lots, which will screen some of those upper lots from our project. But we really tried to nestle these forty-five town homes down in sort of a little of existing bowl where the topography makes sense, to cluster these forty-five town homes. As Karen explained, though, the most important thing now in this revision is to reduce the grading and make the units more marketable in today's economy. The old architecture was really more in style with two thousand and six architecture. Things have changed, and people want a more modern appearance. The old style had tile roofs and more of a Victorian-type presence, which had worked great down on C Street. So what we've done is come up with a more modern architecture, but again, we're stepping these into the hillsides now. Before, we basically had three stories on both sides of the street. With the new concept, as you can see here, this is actually now the street elevation on the downhill units with the garage in the middle and the living space stepped down below. And one of the nice things about that is, if you live on the uphill side of the street, you'll be looking over the top of those. So all of the uphill units now will have views. But we think the architecture is a lot more modern, and some might ask, well, gee, having a garage in the middle of the units isn't that an issue? But our structural engineer is already working on that. We're going to have to have some steel support, but that middle floor will easily support cars in the garage, and there won't be any issue whatsoever. But now, we're really following the contours of the hillside as we step down. And then you can see on the uphill units, sort of the same thing, is now, this is the street side, oops, this is the wrong one. So the other one was the uphill unit, but same thing. So now you're going to see three floors on the street side, but only two floors on the upper side. So if you live in any of the units on the upper portion of this project, you'll only be looking down at two stories. And furthermore, we're actually cutting those uphill units fourteen feet down into the hillside. So really, you're not going to see much in terms of the unit, because we've really worked hard to tuck it into the hillside. And if you look at our site plan here, this shows a little bit more clearly, but you can see, these are the upper units and the downhill units, the cul-de-sac bowl. This area where the three homes were will now be a landscaped area with a barbecue area, a water feature, a tot lot. So again, this project's approved, but we think these amendments are going to be very beneficial to the project, to the city, and all the surrounding residents, and hope that you support our request, and I'm happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
Any questions from the commissioner?
I have a couple of questions. When are you planning on starting this development?
Today, we just signed some more contracts with our architect and civil engineer. We already started engaging our structural engineer. Our plan is basically just to move through methodically on this process, and as soon as we get council approval, we're going to file for our administrative approval of our tentative map, and then immediately follow into the final map. And it's my goal is to have this project ready to develop as soon as we can, weather permitting next spring. We expect next year to be a very busy construction season, so we want to get the plans out to bid as soon as we can and sort of beat the crowd. But we're going to use Pinecrest Construction. They're going to be our design-build contractor, and we've got all our consultants on board. So we're going to try and move through this rapidly and get these things under construction, plus the fact that we are in a housing shortage. And one thing I like about this project, in my mind, this is sort of helping fill in the missing middle, as we've all talked about in our housing crisis of town homes, duets, condos, smaller single-family, to provide more affordable units. But I also don't want anybody to think these aren't going to be nice units. They're going to be high-quality town homes. They are attached but for-sale product.
Yeah, I actually think they look really nice. What, do you have any idea what the price range is going to be at this time?
Right now, based on all our marketing data, we estimate that the starting price of the homes will be around four hundred and twenty thousand dollars, which sounds amazing, but homes have just gone up in price in the last couple of years.
Any further questions?
Just curious, Ken. Has this architectural style been used locally?
You know, there's a lot of different styles and products around, but we're using Gordon Aloya of Aloya Architecture. He's a local architect, and we did a lot of research and homework and looked at a bunch of different concepts, and we thought this was a great fit, because the other thing I want to do is, we're going to use a landscape firm called Calenders and Associates, and really try and have a landscape plan that fits with the high-desert Great Basin area, because we think it looks silly to change the nature of this hillside and bring in, you know, palm trees, so to speak, right? So we want to bring in plants that are native, but as you know, from living So we wanna bring in plants that are native, but as you know, from living in Nevada, there's still a wide variety of flowering and colorful plants that we can put in here, but we think it'll look a lot better if we sort of keep the natural setting of the surrounding area.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Anyone else? Thank you, sir.
All right, thank you.
This being a public hearing item, we also, all in our openness to public hearing, I have a couple of requests here, so I'll call you up first. Jerry Allen, please.
Can you be up here or can you speak?
Up here, please.
Well, I'm not familiar with, um, with protocol.
Mr. Allen, I'll clue you in. You have three minutes. And sir, you start off with your name and your address.
Uh, my name's Jerry Allen, and I'm in one of the homes above this project at 4284 Desert Highlands Drive. And as I mentioned, I'm not familiar with your protocol, but I have questions with respect to logistics of what's gonna take place in putting these places together. Who do I address those to? Would it be the commission here or would it be the, um, these folks?
Well, I don't know.
You can address them to the commission, and we can have our staff follow up, I believe.
Well, that depends on how far it goes. Go ahead and state your questions, and then we'll see, maybe we can call the applicant back.
Well, um, the, I heard him talk about the cul-de-sac that's gonna be built there and the rock and so forth, and, uh, the first question that came to mind would be whether or not they're gonna have to do any dynamiting to actually move rock around, because we're, uh, we, we're actually the recipients of damage in our home, which is above this project as a result of dynamiting in the area. So that would be a question. There are some questions in my mind with respect to schools. Most, I don't hear anything about any additional schools that are gonna be built as a result of this, 'cause I know some of the classrooms now are 35-plus. Fire, I heard, heard mentioned something about Firehouse Four would be the primary, I guess, firehouse to actually, um, that would take care of this, and they've requested that sprinklers be put in the homes. One way in, one way out. I'm not sure how safe that would be. I'm concerned about that. And then I guess lastly is, um, I understand that this project was approved in 2006, so does that mean that, uh, for the most part, this is a definite goal? Basically, that's it for me.
Thank you, Mr. Allen. To the applicant, I will probably call you back. Will you remember some of these questions, please, so we can answer this? All right, Mr. Richard Caporal, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and members of the commission. Three minutes, you can't save very much, but my main concern on this particular project, I live at 4280 Desert Highlands, which is immediately to the north and overlooking the project. So I hear Mr. Crater say it, uh, I can't see it because it's getting so low, but that's one of my concerns, is the standards and design standards and development standards have been changed for this project. 29 feet was, I thought, always the limit in Sparks, and now it's 34. The one access, I thought it used to have, Ellis Hope Division had to have two accesses. So we keep changing this in relationship to the developer to make his plans work and to, uh, my concern is, you keep changing them, where is the standard? We don't have any standard. Jerry is, Jerry Allen is my neighbor. I'm concerned about blasting, too. If you're gonna blast, in the past, we've all had damage when our houses up there because of the hard rock, and it isn't just at the location where the blasting takes place. There's 45 units there, there're gonna be kids, but Beasley is already overcrowded. They're in temporaries, so we gotta have kids, more kids coming to a school that's I read in the thing, there's gonna be right in, left in, right in, whatever it is. Is that the way it's gonna be as far as the access to the unit? Are you only gonna have to go up and turn around to come in from above to get into the unit? Or are you gonna be able to turn left off of Los Altos directly into it? Is the units gonna be fenced? Is that, that open space up there is quite a bit higher than the, uh, location. Our units all had to be fenced. Is this unit gonna be fenced in? And you're putting, allowing, if I counted right, about 15 units per acre, which seems to be excess, too. But that's bas- basically my concerns.
Thank you, Mr. Caporal. Thank you, sir. It's, anyone else care to speak on this item? Not a close to public hearing, and I, I can't represent, come back for it, please. My, if you don't have all the notes on this, my trusted colleague over here has it all written down.
Okay. Well, again, for the record, this is Ken Crater. I'll go through what I wrote down and hopefully answer everything. As far as the blasting, that's one of the reasons that we did all the extra geotechnical work, is to basically figure out, um, how deep we could go in cuts and avoid having to blast, and I can't guarantee that there's not gonna be any blasting, but I believe that based on our design, that we're gonna be able to excavate per the reports down about 10 feet. We've only got a couple of areas that exceed 10 feet, down to 14, and we think beyond that, we can either get some extra heavy equipment in there or basically just jackhammer it out. So we've tried to come up with a site plan that hopefully eliminates the need or absolutely minimizes the need for blasting, because that's very expensive, along with disruptive, to adjoining neighbors. As far as school impacts, yes, every project impacts schools, but with WC1, that certainly changed our ability of our Washoe County School District to build new schools to accommodate students. Our area continues to grow, and frankly, we have a housing shortage, and we need more housing. And fortunately, I believe the school district is going to great lengths to start construction of new schools that can accommodate the students coming into this area. As far as fire and access, obviously, it's very common within any community, including the city of Sparks, to have cul-de-sacs. That's a street that's very desirable for folks to live on, and this cul-de-sac has been basically approved by the fire department. We do have to sprinkler the units, and that's because of the code requirement that requires sprinklers when you have cul-de-sac that exceed a certain length. We never had two means of access on this project because frankly, it's almost impossible to get from the cul-de-sac back out to Los Altos because of the grade differential and the fact that we'd have to cross the ditch for a second time. So the original approval had one cul-de-sac, and that's what we have today. The design standards themselves haven't changed. We still have the same landscaping requirements. We still have the same setbacks. Basically, the only thing that's changed as far as the design standards is the new architecture, which frankly, I, I am very confident looks much better than what we originally had in the handbook. We do have a left turn into the project. We're going to be constructing this left turn pocket within the median opening, so we'll have basically full movements in and out of the site, so they won't have to go up and hang a U-turn and turn around. And staff had us do an analysis to make sure that we have enough left turn storage within that median pocket, and we have more than enough left turn storage even with additional growth on Los Altos Parkway. As far as fencing, I wanted to keep the site open, so the only fencing that we're gonna have on this project is to allow people to fence in their backyards for a private patio. And the other fence we're gonna have is along the front of the project, along Los Altos, we'll have a fence this entire length, which will be a wrought iron metal fence, but we're going to do dense screening behind that with arbor vía and vines, so it'll basically become a green fence. So it'll help block the noise and traffic, but, uh, won't have to worry about graffiti, and it'll look a lot better from cars driving up and down Los Altos Parkway. And then finally, as far as the density, again, we're really developing 45 town units on 30.55 acres. So essentially, our density is about 1.5 units per acre in keeping with the zoning and, and desirability of the product. I think that addresses all the questions that I heard, so.
What minute do you have? Anything else? Anybody?
Mr. Chair, I've got a question. Mr. Crater, what is going to be the fence height of the units that you're gonna allow them to fence?
The maximum fence height on the patio units, I believe, is six feet, and the maximum height, the long Los Altos, is five.
Okay.
And that's just because I didn't wanna be overimposing on the view back and forth between Los Altos and the rear of the homes.
Is it, uh, do you have specific fencing material that is, that you're gonna allow?
Yes, we have very detailed materials, and I kinda went back and forth. Staff, I know, was saying, gee, you ought to put a solid fence along Los Altos because of the traffic, but we included some details in the handbook, and I believe that wrought iron fence with like a seagreen juniper, a smaller variety, in there will look better, and you won't have, we all know fences only last long in the Reno area, and I just think long-term is gonna be much more attractive than having a solid wood fence.
Perfect. Thank you.
You're welcome.
And I did notice on the left-hand turn lane that, uh, on page 49 of the, of the handbook, it was assuming essentially two cars will be pulling in there during peak time and, which would require 50 feet, and they did go up to 150 feet to essentially allow four vehicles to be able to turn left in there.
Yeah, in fact, what is required by Sparks, they had us meet NDOT standards, and NDOT requires that you have enough stacking to stack three minutes' worth of vehicles in that pocket, so we exceed that requirement.
Nothing further? Thank you, sir.
Thank you. One last thing, I'm always happy, just so the neighbors know, to answer any questions after the meeting or whatever I can to ease their minds, so I just wanna put that on the record.
Thank you. Karen, would you come forward, please? Is there anything that we should add to this that you could see fits, since you took notes, too? Or are we, especially, he, there, one gentleman stated that the acreage has changed in the development. That's not true, is it?
There has not been any change, and the density is 1.5 units per acre, which is actually less than what the designation is for the master plan designation on this property.
All right, thank you.
Mr. Chair. The gentleman also had another question regarding, uh, that the project was approved in 2006 and regarding, is this definite? So can you explain?
The handbook was, was approved in 2007. Actually, 2006 was the zone change to the new urban district. The zoning, the handbook has been approved, so if this amendment would not be approved, the applicants could go forward with what's been recorded and do the old architectural design and the old, um, grading of the site.
Thank you.
So, yeah.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Karen, I have a question about use of dynamite for blasting. Is, is there like a policy for, um, using dynamite or blasting in the city? Is there any kind of notification process, or is that a common practice?
As far as I know, it's not common. I think I would like to turn that over to Community Service Director.
Commissioner Carey, to answer your question directly, it is to the purview of the fire marshal, because it is blasting. So yes, there is a program, there is protocols. Blasting has been used throughout the hillsides in almost all of our developments, as you get up out of the valley bottom and get into the rock. But there, there is procedures and processes they have to follow.
Is it a permit process, and is there a notification?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
If there's nothing further, I'll bring it back to the commission and let us discuss this. And a possible motion, please.
If I may, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to lead off the discussion. Um, I guess I was kind of, I was a little concerned to hear about blasting in the area as well, too, so I appreciate staff's, um, in- input on that, and I, I hope the fire marshal continues to work with that in the neighborhood and notification moving forward. I, I, from my perspective, I concur with the proposed changes. I think they're in substantial compliance with the existing handbook. I think the, um, the design, the contemporary design is, is really neat, but I think the split level reduces, um, the footprint and the need for the rockery wa- rockery walls, which is always a good thing, in my opinion. Thank you.
Any further comments?
And just to add on that, uh, Mr. Chairman, I see that the, with the split level and the walkout basements and the different things, it's gonna reduce a lot of the need, I think, for the blasting. And, um, I also think it's, it's a great change.
All right. I will entertain a motion and infer through discussing this.
Mr. Chair, I move to forward a recommendation of approval to the City Council of the proposed First Amendment of the final handbook associated with PCN 17-0028 for the Sierra View Town Homes Plan Development based on the findings set forth in the staff report.
Second?
We have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. We'll move back to general business again items, and we're going to, uh, item number 11, PCN 17-0020.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, Planning Commissioners. I'm Jonathan Cummins, Assistant Planner. I'm here tonight to present a request for case PCN 17-0020 be taken from the table, where it was placed on August 8, 2017, and added to the agenda for December 7, 2017, your next meeting. PCN 17-0020 is a tentative map request for a seven-lot residential subdivision on a 1.96-acre property, zoned SF7 at the southeast corner of Brea and Spanish Springs Road, just west of Sparks Boulevard outlined in blue on this vicinity map. The subdivision in question would look like this, this being the tentative map proposed by the applicant. These are seven residential lots on what would be called Liam Court. To summarize or to recap the history of the case that you've heard recently, after July 6, 2017 meeting, commissioners found that the Nevada business license for the applicant, Sarah Liam LLC, had a status of permanently revoked. As such, the applicant was requesting to continue the item to August 3, 2017, at which time staff re-presented the case, only to report that the status of that business license had not been resolved. On October 16, 2017, staff received a new application, an owner affidavit stating that the owner of the property was Barbara Kavanaugh and Colin Piers, not Sarah Liam LLC. Those two individuals are now the owners requesting the tentative map. Tonight, staff's requesting that the Planning Commission take the item from the table and direct staff to add it to the December 17, 2017 Planning Commission agenda. At that time, we would present the full staff report and its findings. So I'll be happy to attempt to answer any questions.
Questions? Commissioners, staff? Any none? Thank you.
I do, I, actually, I, I do have one. Just when we, when we do hear it back in December, I'd like to see if this would trigger any kind of improvements done for Spanish Springs Road. I don't think it will, but if we can state that, that'd be fantastic.
We'll look into that. Thank you.
Were the applicant like to add anything to this?
For the record, Scott Wright, Rubicon Design Group, speaking on behalf of the applicant and on behalf of Mike Raely, who is unable to make it tonight due to a scheduling conflict on this. Just wanted to be clear, these are the same applicants, it's just the LLC... Just wanted to be clear, these are the same applicants, it's just the LLC was being split up due to a divorce, so they were still in the process of that. So the application, the new affidavit, is the same people, it's just under a different name, so just wanted to state that clearly. If you have any questions for me about that, I can try to answer those as best I can. And there will be a full, the full presentation on the project will be next.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate that very much. I'll go ahead and bring this back to the commissioners for discussion.
No, we're directing staff to put it on the agenda, correct?
December 7? Can I make a motion to put PCN 17-0020 on the December 7, planning, direct staff to put it on the December 7, planning commission agenda?
Second.
Have a motion and a second? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The motion carries. Again, we're open for public comment. If anyone desires to make any public comment, you've got three minutes. If not, any comments from the commissioners?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I think last night, we all got an email from the community relations manager about a vacancy for this commission to have a representative on the Citizens Advisory Committee. I was wondering if we could perhaps maybe schedule that as an agenda item for the December 7 meeting for discussion and maybe make an appointment. I can think of some commissioners who would do very well on that committee. I'm not among them, but. And I believe we also need to, and we'll have Commissioner Shabazz on board, we can also maybe schedule an item for a second alternate to the Regional Planning Commission. I believe Commissioner Gabba was the second, he's no longer a member.
That's right. That's a very good point. Got that all, Mondo? Do we have to, on this Citizens Advisory, does that have to be?
I didn't think that was an appointment.
That's not, that's not part of this commission's appointment.
It's mayor appointment.
It's the mayor's.
Oh, is it?
Yes. That's a city council appointment anyhow.
Oh, okay, we don't, it's not like.
And as I understood, in fact, I got to be honest with you, I applied for that.
Okay, good.
And I got, within three hours after my application, I got a word back that they already had one that they thought was going to be a nominee, and therefore, they would take me as a second alternate, and if I wanted, I'm not interested in that condition. I only applied for it to keep myself active. And also, I started my career on a Citizens Advisory Committee. So anyhow, I.
It's filled. Sounds like it's filled.
Well, that's what, I understand that whoever is in charge of that has already got an applicant she wants put forward.
Oh, okay, I was under the impression, I'm not really up to date on my bylaws for the Citizens Advisory Committee. I thought maybe there was like a representative from Parks and Rec, one from Planning Commission, one from.
John, it's not the way it works.
I should have read the email more.
We will clarify, and if it's an item that needs to be agendaed for the 7th, we will add it to the agenda discussion for you to select a second alternative.
Right. If that's not the way it works, then I would like to know for sure. But if that's the way it works, that somebody else has the authority.
The mayor has the authority, it's. But we will clarify that.
Well, I really don't think the way that that came across, and the way I answered it that quick, that it had time to go to the mayor. So if somebody else is making a decision that they think this nominee would be better than whoever else.
We will look into it and report back.
Because I want to say, sorry, Mr. Chairman, I want to say it was Commissioner Spurber was the planning commission representative, and with him not being on the commission, maybe that's how it works. That's what I was thinking.
I don't know. But we do appreciate, I do appreciate if we could have a finding on that, what would be.
And one other thing, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to just say a big thank you to staff to get that, the PCN 17-0035. I know that was a lot of work that's probably been done in the last two weeks, and I appreciate the work that has been done by staff to get that moving in the right direction.
I agree, that'd be quite a thing.
I agree.
Yeah, and it really proved that there are times that we should continue some of these things if we've got time to put them together. The other thing is, I guess that's it, that is an important thing about the alternate to regional, that we do have to address. And so with that, if there's no other comment, we will adjourn. Is that all right?